Statement. Yeah, yes. Okay, kids. You guys ready to roll? Ringers?
Yeah.
Here's your ringer off. Rings off. Rings off.
You ready back there? I didn't even say to turn it on yet. All right. Uh, meeting number forty-six is now called to order this November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. It is five thirty P M. We're in the Thomas T. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Wilson?
Here.
Phillips? Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
All right. Uh, first on the agenda tonight are Mayor's Awards. And, uh, these Mayor's Awards we're giving, uh, to a group of people that we want to recognize tonight. Um, those of you may, uh, may or may not be familiar, I would think. Most people in Burlington or Des Moines County would be familiar with, uh, the Paint-a-thon that is held every year. Uh, twenty-seven years straight, to be exact. And, uh, um, everybody got a paint this year. I went around to check a couple of houses, and I was harassed by that man. But I, but I don't know how many houses have been scraped and painted and, and not just that, you know, different things fixed around the house and stuff. And sometimes people need help. Sometimes people need help. And it's good to know that we've got, uh, people in Des Moines County and Burlington Iowa that are willing to do that. And, uh, I just want to recognize a few of those people tonight. Um, and it's my privilege and honor, uh, to do so. So I'm going to give the awards out individually, and I'll give you your bracelet and ask you to have a word, and then get a personal picture, and then I'd like to get a picture taken. Um, they, uh, Jim bought his own personal. Jim, wave to the crowd, would you? This guy, this guy. All right, so, uh, we'll do individual pictures, and I'd like to get a picture with all of us together and all the council members, too, if you guys don't mind.
Sounds great.
Uh, anyways, uh, first off, uh, be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being model Burlingtonians. The Paint-a-thon has been a tremendous blessing to the City of Burlington for the last twenty-seven years. Without your hard work and commitment, it would not be possible. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Community Action, first and foremost. Come on down. And I have a bracelet. Hopefully you'll put that somewhere nice. I really try to give you my best signature.
Oh, I see that.
Yeah, I struggle, though. It is, it's got its own issues. No, thank you. And can I get a picture taken with you, too? And then I have you go to the, to the booth and, uh, have a word with me. Sorry, hey, jump in there. So, uh, please, have a word. You came down. You're gonna have to say something.
Speak, 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 speak.
We want to thank you very much for this. As you know, we probably serve about seventeen percent of the population in Burlington, who's currently low income, who comes to us for service. Of course, this couldn't be done without the work of all the volunteers. Uh, we're happy to help with the applications and going through that process. And with that, I'll let our main man speak.
It's been a real privilege to be part of the Paint-a-thon for the number of years we've been doing this. I, I was, uh, asked to kind of spearhead the community action part in my first year of employment. And I was a little bit overwhelmed with it, but, uh, it really is pretty easy when all the people that participate, uh, contribute so much so willingly. So it's really been a privilege to be along on the journey, and hopefully it continues on. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Some of you watching may be wondering, "Man, it's awfully cold to be painting." We already got the painting done. We're just getting down to this now. Okay. Uh, we couldn't get the painting done without all the paint. And, uh, Diamond Vogel has been a, a partner that has been committed to the job. So we want to recognize, uh, Diamond Vogel tonight. And, uh, Nick is with us. So on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being model Burlingtonians. Uh, the Paint-a-thon's been a tremendous blessing over the last twenty-seven years. And without your hard work and commitment, it would not be possible. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Diamond Vogel. Nick, would you please come on down? Give you one of these. Man, that's, looks like you got gloves on, man. That's actually flesh. Would you have a word, my friend?
Yeah. Uh, just like to say thanks for the award tonight. Uh, grateful for that. Also thankful to all the volunteers we have for the twenty-seven years of the Paint-a-thon. Uh, we couldn't do it without, uh, Community Action, Two Rivers, great partners to have. Um, also want to say thanks to Diamond Vogel to allow us to continue that, you know. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Speaking of Two Rivers, you can't bring up Two Rivers without bringing up Jim O'Neil. Um, this guy's here, there, and everywhere. He's like poo on the bottom of your shoe. Okay, okay. Gum on the bottom of your shoe? Oh, fine, yeah. Yeah, I'm the poo on the bottom of somebody's shoe, so. But, uh, uh, Jim has been committed over the years, just, this guy has done a little bit of everything, but I'm glad to be recognizing Two Rivers and be reckoning Jim tonight, recognizing Jim tonight. It says the same thing, but I'm gonna read it anyways. "On behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. The Paint-a-thon has been a tremendous blessing to the City of Burlington for the last twenty-seven years. And without your hard work and commitment, it would not be possible. You help make Burlington a great place to work, live, and play. On November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to..." Jim O'Neil, come on down. I'm doing what I'm doing next. Oh, okay. This is, you know what this guy, this is a New Rivers, I'm running this show. Actually, I'm not. I'm not. I got this weird way to my throat. Sir, would you have a word, please?
Thank you. I would like, just to give you a few statistics. We average thirty teams, five hundred volunteers a year, and eight, we've been in Minneapolis eighteen years. This is our twenty-seventh year in Burlington, and we have painted five hundred and nineteen houses in twenty-seven years.
Wow, that's awesome.
And, once again, as was mentioned before, we could not do it without the volunteers. And Community Action, Diamond Vogel, and Two Rivers was there from day one, and some of the volunteers have been there since day one. Thank you very much for the award.
You know, this next person I wanted to do last, because as much of a rock star that Jim is, um, everybody has somebody that does legwork behind the scenes. And I can really relate to this, because people say, "Shane, how'd you get to all those places? I couldn't have done it without the help of the rock stars behind me." Thank you, Kathleen. So I'm really honored to give this one out. I just want you to know, you've got a beautiful voice over the phone. Let's get down to business. Being on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. The Paint-a-thon has been a tremendous blessing to the City of Burlington for the last twenty-seven years. Without your hard work and commitment, it would not be possible. You help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Renee Ziser. Please come on down. She told you it was gonna be painless. Renee, would you have a word, please?
I'd like to thank the City of Burlington very much for this award. It's quite an honor, and I was totally shocked when Shane called for this. So, um, the Paint-a-thon is a huge part of what Two Rivers stands for, and that means community. And I'm proud to be, uh, working at Two Rivers, proud to be, um, behind the scenes, as you say, for the Paint-a-thon. And thank you very much again for the award.
Can we get you guys all to come up so we can get a picture with all the winners? Jim brought his own professional. You roll like O'Neil. Yeah. When I grew up, I would be like that guy.
Oh, Matt, get up here.
That's right, everybody come on in. Hey, let's, uh, let's bring in the council members, too. We're missing some. Let's, uh, everybody go bring on. Get some practice for next year.
We can't wait.
Yeah.
Even if I stand on this ground, I won't be a preacher.
You guys gotta share.
She just sneaked her door.
All right, we'll be rolling downhill tonight. Uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Thank you, James. On the, uh, consent, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes reports, and bonds. And we have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving annual urban renewal report. The third is a resolution approving annual financial report. The fourth is a resolution amending City of Burlington money purchase plan, number ten dash eight six eight two. The fifth is a resolution authorizing funds transfers for the fiscal year two thousand twenty. Uh, the sixth is a resolution approving purchasing policies and procedures. And then the seventh is a resolution amending fees and charge schedule at Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course. And we have a public hearing set for December second for consideration of a sale of vacated portion of former alley right-of-way located north of the property at twenty-four oh eight to twenty-four ten Flint Hills Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel? Make it a motion.
Good. I move to approve all items, all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Um, first we have a, uh, consideration of a sale of a portion of property locally known as seven oh nine South Eighth Street, City of Burlington. Hold on. What's the one that I want, what's the one that I need to do first? Is that the one? Okay. Okay. Uh, locally known as seven oh nine South Eighth Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Tisdale?
Uh, the city has acquired this property. It was, uh, an abandoned property that was, uh, since been demolished. Uh, we have had interest from both property owners to the north and south. And the resolution before you would, uh, split the lot for purposes of sale with the northern half, uh, twenty feet being sold to Sarah Niffen, and the southern half, twenty feet being sold to Stephen and Laura Davis. This would, uh, allow expansion of their, uh, lots, uh, from adjacent property owners. Uh, purchase price for the lot sold is, uh, five hundred dollars for each half of the lot. Uh, and the lot, uh, being sold should be combined with their property. Generally, when we acquire, uh, vacant lots, uh, those are either sold to adjacent property owners or, uh, required to have a new home constructed on them, um, within a certain time period. So, uh, we have had interest from both property owners and would, uh, recommend proceeding that, in that manner.
Right on. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Good. I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally, locally known as seven oh nine South Eighth Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Move to second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes, please.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, it's done deal. Thanks for coming down. Enjoy the basketball game. Number two.
Your Honor, I have, uh, a consideration of plans and specifications for twenty nineteen Lewis Street Sewer Repair Project.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Mr. McGregor, that's all right. We can never get too many of those.
Oh, yeah.
I think he'll be throwing up a PowerPoint here for me.
Switch to the overhead here. Switch to the projector.
Uh, so the plans and specs in front of you, um, are in response to, uh, an issue that we were reported from property owners, uh, off of Lewis Street. Lewis Street is, um, on southern portion of, just off southern portion of Main Street. Uh, as you can see, uh, within the map overhead, um, there's a line that, that runs, uh, north, uh, from Lewis Street, uh, down the ridge into what is Bonds Hollow to, uh, the Arch Main, uh, the Arch Sewer. Uh, the, the purple lines, this is for staff purposes, to understand kind of where we have some collapses. Uh, it is a, it's a pretty significant drop-off. It's about forty-foot deep, uh, is the best we can kind of visualize. Uh, Jesse's estimated the project costs about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, just because of the depth of excavation. So we really won't know what it really entails until we get into it, uh, start excavating. But, um, these types of projects unfortunately crop up. We've had several of them in the last couple of years. If you want to hit the next slide, kind of give you an image of what's going on. Uh, the top left is the connection to the Arch Sewer. Uh, it is still allowing, uh, materials to go through it, so it's not a, it's not an immediate emergency concern, uh, nor is it pooling anywhere, uh, like what the North Eighth Street off of, uh, where that ivy off of Ankular, where we had those issues. That's, that's why that was an emergency. This is, it's still flowing correctly, just, uh, that we have a lot of, uh, we have a sinkhole, and we need to get it corrected, so. Immediately following this, we'll advertise, and work will, uh, begin in the spring, so. I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the audience for Nick? I see none. Counsel?
Nick, I just have one question. I listened to the work session the other day, but the, um, access, there's a pretty steep grade there coming off the street. How do you plan to access the property? I mean...
That, they'll have to use a really sizable excavator, uh, because they'll have to park just off the side of the, off the, you know, off the sidewalk there and reach down and excavate. And so we'll have to have the appropriate easements with them. But unfortunately, I think there might be a line that comes in from the east as well, uh, that they may have to get to. But that's why these projects get expensive, is that you have to have big pieces of equipment in there to excavate.
And you're thinking about the project starting when?
Sometime this spring.
Okay.
Satisfied?
Yeah.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Can I get a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Did you have caffeine?
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand nineteen Lewis Street Sewer Repair Project.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number one.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving docking agreement with Viking USA LLC.
Second.
Chelsea May?
Hello. Chelsea Larue, Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, sorry, we missed so many of you last week. I did have a special guest in attendance, um, Mr. David Simmons with Viking River Cruises, um, to kind of share this news with you. I was really excited to get the phone call two weeks ago that, um, their plans had changed, and so they're ready to dock in Burlington, launching the first vessel in two thousand twenty-two. Right now, we have dates for twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, their plans are to dock on a weekly basis, um, for, from mid-July through mid-October. They, um, will launch one vessel to start, and, uh, then they anticipate it being so popular, they'll keep ordering multiple boats, and, um, hopefully a few years down the road, they'll be here on a daily basis. So, uh, they, they're looking for a long-term agreement in the future, so work with, um, city staff on that. But right now, we're just looking to, uh, approve an agreement for two years and, um, start the work with them in two thousand twenty-two. Any questions about the agreement?
Let me check with the audience first. Any questions? I see none. Counsel?
No, I'm excited about it, and I watched the footage, so I did get to see your special guest, so.
Yeah, I saw this. The only question I had, what infrastructure requirements do they have? Anything that we don't currently have, or are they...
For right now, they can dock, um, like we docked the other vessels. And, um, I know he, um, Mr. Simmons has spoken with, uh, Nick about the potential new dock that's going in, and that should work, um, for them as well.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Good.
As we've talked about it, uh, Chelsea was mentioning it, they were looking for a twenty-year agreement. I, I don't think that we can really do a great job of locking up for twenty years, but I think that if, uh, an arrangement where we did something, uh, on five-year terms and possibly with some optional renewal language built in it, that we may be able to get to where they're trying to get, but still give us a little bit of flexibility, depending on what happens in the future.
That sounds good. Chelsea May, thanks for coming down.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Kathleen? Let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Yes, please.
McCambell?
Me, too.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the waiving of right-of-way permit for three hundred Washington Street.
Second.
Steve Freiber, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. Uh, as we assemble our resources to begin working on, uh, the northeast corner of the building, we know that we need to continue to have, uh, some parking spaces blocked off, uh, on the Third Street side. Uh, and, uh, the, the current rate, uh, for right-of-way permit, uh, to block off those parking spaces, uh, we're estimating, uh, if it's a six-month project, uh, it's going to total over four thousand dollars. And that's funding that we would rather put into repairing the building rather than, than blocking off parking, uh, especially with consideration that, uh, in a short time, uh, the parking lot across the street will be made, uh, pretty much available to the public, uh, to park in, no, no cost. Uh, there's currently no businesses on the other side of that block of Third Street, and only one, uh, on our side of three hundred, uh, the next of three hundred Washington. So, uh, that's, that's what we're asking, uh, waiving those permit fees and, uh, hopefully can get to work very quickly on this.
Della had mentioned that, um, you're hopeful to have some of that shoring up work done by the end of November?
Yes. Yep. We, we have a board meeting first thing in the morning, and we're gonna be authorizing, uh, expenditure to, to take care of some of those immediate issues.
Uh, potentially, we're, we'll have to work through our building department, but we're hopeful that with the work that gets done through that, at least that short-term work, uh, that that is done in a way that's satisfactory, or we can pull the fencing back to the curb line until you reach a point where you're into more of the full construction in the spring.
Yeah, we may end up taking a look at it. Um, the contract with the fence rental company is out of the Quad Cities, and it's a six-month contract. They actually charge extra if we, uh, have them, uh, remove some of the fence early, so we'll have to take a look at that and see if there's a way around that, so.
Um, and the other piece of that, the resolution you see waives that fee through September one. Uh, the work session we talked about for six months, and just talking with Nick, um, and not knowing exactly what your timing was gonna be, but we wanted to give, have a little bit of flexibility built within this, uh, but still have a hard and fast date on the end. Uh, this is more than the six months that was mentioned by Councilmember Phillips, but, um...
Phillips.
Phillips, Phillips, Phillips. Um, but, um...
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
He calls me Macagny every once in a while. I hate to just get...
Takes me back to seventy-six, but, um... Yeah, one year. But this, I, I think it's, makes more sense to give a, a little bit of additional time beyond that six months, depending...
We believe we can get it done in less time than that, but, uh, yeah, so there are certainly be unknowns with this project, so.
Absolutely. I don't have any questions.
I, I do, Steve. And there may be a reason we can't do this, but when I drive by and I see all the bricks laying there, kind of, it looks kind of unsightly, like London Bridge is falling down. Is there any way at least those brick, those bricks could be picked up?
Uh, I, I am not, uh, I am not an expert in, uh, in, uh, construction or engineering, and, uh, we are gonna let the experts take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, that, the last thing you want is for me or a volunteer or city staff or somebody to, to get injured, uh, removing stuff. Yeah. Because we know it's precarious, so.
Thank you.
We're good?
Good.
All right. Audience, we're good? Anybody from the audience? Everybody's good? Okay. Kathleen, let's do it.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now comes time for, uh, comments from the audience. We will gladly take comments from the audience. Anyone? Councilman?
Would you like me to introduce myself?
Yes, please.
Uh, Robert Kreitzer, eight-ten North Fifth. Uh, I wanted to add to, uh, all the people from the Paint-a-thon. Uh, Nick actually went above and beyond after the fact. Um, my wife and I are on the Grimes PTO, and she wanted to, uh, take on this project where she wanted to repaint the playground. We painted all the, um, the tetherball courts. We did four-square. Um, all the tetherbar, tetherball courts turned into something else, so we have a koi pond. We have a compass. We have a dartboard, a maze, um, an alphabet wheel, and it's absolutely amazing. So if you haven't been out there yet, um, you should check it out. The kids are loving it. So, uh, he let us run a tab. We went out there, we got all our brushes, all our paint, all, everything. And then, um, when it came time to pay, he's like, "Yeah, just stop out, we'll let you know." And we'd stop out, and, "Well, it's not ready yet, we'll let you know." And I'd call, and we'd stop out. And so at the end of it, um, my wife went out there to finally get the bill, and he's like, "So you guys spent about eight hundred bucks." And we're like, "Okay, cool, we're ready to write the check, right?" And he's like, "But, um, after your discount and all that," he's like, "How's like a hundred and seventy-eight dollars sound," or whatever, somewhere around there. So he gave us pretty much, uh, six hundred dol, it was eight hundred dollars. So he gave us a six hundred dollar discount, and, uh, we put all the work in, but they donated all the paint and the supplies. And, uh, I, I wanted to thank them while they were here, but, uh, shout out to them, and I really appreciate them being part of the community like that. And, uh, Jim for introducing me and making those connections and so that I, you know, had access to those folks, so.
Also, a big shout out to the wife, man. She did a great job.
You've seen it.
It looks, it looks amazing.
And you've seen the kids.
Shame on me that I did not have her down here, and I'm gonna try to get that done, because, man, I'll tell you what, she is, uh, uh, she's talented.
I almost sent some pictures down.
I know that took some time to do all of that.
Now, is this Grimes School, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have to go see, check it out.
She was out there three weeks, four weeks, I don't remember. I was in there for two weeks of it, and I was like, you know, about to drop. She'd go out there as soon as the sun came up, and she wouldn't come home until the sun went down. And, um, she was competing with people out there playing, and the rain, and we were pulling out the awnings and like trying to cover up while you're going, and... Uh, oh, she also did paw prints all over the place, so there's, uh, Greyhound paw prints just all over the playground, so. You should go out there and look. It's, it's really something. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Shen? He's just down here to be eye candy, or you got something to say?
I'm just enjoying.
All right, we appreciate that. Okay, then, Mr. Tisdale?
I don't have much information right now, but we are getting ready to send out info on the Citizens Academy again, so we'll have more details on that coming up, but we'll post that on our website and Facebook. So people interested, again, it's an application and we try and select around 12 individuals for that. And this, I think, is the third annual Citizens Academy, so we've had good response from it, good feedback, and we'll have that again starting early next year.
How soon are you going to put that on the...
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks or within the next week or so. And then it starts early 2020.
Let me have it in the red of this. I got one more thing before you forgot.
Come on, man.
All right, so if you guys are agreeable to it, my friend Annika McVeigh made the school board and one of the first questions she asked me, we came down here on election night at nine o'clock to find out who won. She said, "What is something you think you can do to help the city and the school district connect with each other and do something where we're active in each other's lives a little more?" So I went home and I brainstormed about it and I thought that what we could do is maybe do a Citizens Academy for the high school students and offer government credit. Let me find my email that I sent to Jim, to Mr. Cohen, to Pat Cohen. And I kind of gave him my thoughts on it, so hold on. Sent. So what my thoughts were was if we covered everything the Citizens Academy covered before, police fire, water treatment, so on, I thought that student involvement and understanding would improve the role of government in their lives and that they might use their knowledge as a tool to make necessary changes in the future, to either limit or expand and make government work for them with their understanding. I also thought it might spark their interest in a career in one of the many fields that city government encompasses. If anything, building relationships between the various departments and the young adults in the community will help them understand what resources are available and who to ask for help, not to mention all the learning. So I thought that if we had volunteers to lead the tours, you know, every so often they could take the class at the school, every so often we lead a tour, take them through some of the departments and they could get some high school credit for it and maybe, maybe spark some interest. And they loved it. So the school board is, they're already on board with it. They're trying to figure out the logistics of it. I just wanted to make sure it would be okay on our level to participate in something like that.
It's funny you brought it up. We just had this conversation with JG and Music when we did the mayor's...
That young man was amazing, as I guess, yes.
So already some, some wheels were starting to turn and it will be out of my hands, but I think, I definitely think you guys are in a position to push that forward.
All right. Well, the school board's already all over it and Cohen loves the idea, so we can meet in the middle somewhere if it's possible.
I already talked to Jim. He says he's all in as long as he doesn't have to deal with me.
He's got a good poker face.
Just make sure you wait till after the first of the year to get it started. But no, that's a great...
I also wanted to, to give you the PS that I sent Pat. I said, "Pat, I'm sending this email from my personal account, so don't spam me with offers from Christian Mingle or Hair Club."
So I set this guy down. What are you, on the council or something? Cowboy, you got anything before we close? Good to see you. Thanks for coming down, man. Mr. Shen's eye candy. So, okay. Kathleen, you got anything? Peanut butter?
I do have a couple things. Thanksgiving's right around the corner, so considering, consider volunteering for the Burlington Annual Thanksgiving. That's a tradition and I think you'll find it very, very satisfying if you can volunteer either before the event, during the event, or after the event that occurs November 20... Look at that, 2017. Who gave me this data? So anyway, sorry about that. It's Thanksgiving and if you're interested in volunteering, donating product or cash, contact Lois Blythe at the library. There we go. And then a second thing I have is the First Holiday Shop is this Thursday, so that's pretty important, so write that down. First Holiday Shop in Burlington downtown this Thursday, featuring pop-up vendors, so something new, pop-up vendors at each participating business. So be sure and check that out this Thursday.
Sounds like a plan. I would like to first recognize that I went to the council chambers today and I saw two new mailboxes sitting on the table for the new council members. I thought that was pretty cool. So wishing you guys the best. And if there's any, any way you can utilize me after they roll me out, you guys have my cell phone number, I'd be more than glad. I don't expect any phone calls. Also, Toys for Tots is coming up, so those that like to participate, you'll see the places out there. Sometimes a lot of people blow that off, but if you were ever a child in need or a parent that, that wanted to do something nice for your kids and things were tough, you would appreciate that program. So if you don't literally appreciate or utilize that program, take advantage of it so that somebody else can literally utilize and appreciate that program. Also, we had our very own Kathleen Salisbury. She turned, "I won't give her age, but if I told you, you wouldn't believe me because she looks so good." But she just had a birthday. I want to wish her a happy birthday. We miss Peanut Butter's birthday, so happy belated...
I don't have him anymore.
To Peanut Butter. She doesn't have him anymore. She quit at 27, so... But Kathleen was also the, made the newsletter. She was the employee of import. What was the title on that?
Spotlight?
There you go. There you go. I just got the, I just got the nod. She was the Spotlight Employee of the Month and she just went on and on about how important I was. And if you want to read that article where it says absolutely nothing about me, but it does say a lot of things about Kathleen who does so much. She's our city clerk. I just want to recognize that you do a heck of a job for us and they picked somebody good to spotlight. The only other thing is, is that's it. That's all. MPT.
I've got nothing tonight. Thank you.
You got nothing?
Nothing.
All right. Counselor?
I just wanted to remind people it is the season, so the food pantry will be in dire need of your contributions over the next couple of weeks and months. So, so if you feel in your heart to donate to any of the local pantries, appreciate it. Also, I want Steve left before I had the opportunity, but I wanted to thank him for last week's DPI presentation. I thought it was well.
James?
One of the things that we'll probably try to get arranged to is a tour of city facilities. That will be likely in January and it sounds based off of schedules, it's probably the beginning, needs to be front-loaded beginning of the week as opposed to end of the week for schedules. But we'll need to try to get something coordinated with, with your schedules to get around to different city facilities. When it comes to involvement with the school system, a couple of things that would point out are Minneapolis was able to take their students, bring a group of students down and I know they toured the water and the wastewater treatment plant here recently. And they had some really good things to say about that tour and what was said by Don and then out at the water plant. They, they really appreciated the time that they put in as staff, the message that they gave to students. One thing that was noted that they talked about was the need for students, this was told to me from them, the need for students to be, come to work, show up on time, show up, be involved. And I think that, that we've heard that from other parts of the business community too, just emphasizing to students to some, just life skills that need to be built in to be able to, to make it in the workforce. And I, I think that most of our areas have, I mean, we've got junior, the, I'm not sure what the title is for the, on the firefighter side or the PD side. The explorers. Same. So those types of programs, we do want to be able to build into students and if we have other ways that we can do it, we certainly would like to, like to as time goes on. The leadership group for Southeast Iowa, the two students from each school, and Bill, you'd have a little bit better idea how that's organized than me, but... What's that? Empower U. That class or that group of students comes in here once, once during the, their sessions during the year and they take time to learn about local government. Empower U.
And they participate in legislative days.
Yes.
Yeah, they've been at the Southeast Iowa Days every year.
Yep.